Okay, we'll call the council meeting to order on October twenty eighth at seven oh two P M. Let's rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to number three, which is public comment period. Is anybody here for public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on. We'll go to number four, approval of the agenda. I do just have a update from the Vivid team just regarding website information for the city of Green Isle. Does anybody else have anything else to add?
I got one.
You're blowing me. That the streets update?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll put you down here. You guys got anything?
No.
Perfect. I know Mark will not be in attendance tonight. He did message me that, but. Just my addition here, no others. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions.
Oh, second?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign and that carries. We'll move on to number five, approval of the consent agenda, items A and B, with claims totaling twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars, sixty five cents.
I don't have a question for you already. That twenty eight thousand, seven seventy seven, sixty five includes the other two in the back here for the drone footage in Dan Elpe construction stuff. It's just not all.
Without puddle, yeah.
It's all.
And that ten thousand for Dan Elpe is that deposit to get work started?
Correct. Yes, yep. Don deposit and then just a, an agreement in place for that. So he's ready to go. Cool. I assume he said he can get that completed this fall yet, right? That's gonna be amazing.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the month of October fourteenth and the claim for October twenty eight, twenty twenty five totaling twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars and sixty five cents.
Motion on the floor there, second?
Okay, second. We got a question.
Motion a second. Further discussion?
No, Mr. Harrison, can he approve the minutes for him not being here last week?
Oh, great. Oh, that's great. You're right.
I will abstain.
Yeah. But, um.
I would make the motion then.
So that will, well, let's just do A and B for the minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. I want abstain. Perfect. And then, did you want your motion to carry for item B?
Yes.
Perfect. And Hunter, you seconded that one, correct? And a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion for B? Good catch, Sean. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. That carries. As far as City Attorney Ken Jansen, I, the only update that I know of today is that he just sent an email checking in if the bank has taken over any sort of maintenance, et cetera, at this school building. And so far, the answer is no. So right now, it's, it's still under our umbrella until informed otherwise. So we're just waiting and then more to be discussed at the next E D A meeting. Do you have, did you hear anything else in the meeting?
I haven't heard anything.
Perfect. Then we'll move on to number seven, utility bill, water bill question.
That is me.
That's all you.
Um, the resident was unable to attend. Previously, we've had them attend a meeting. Um, and I said that I present to council for them. There was a large usage of water. Um, and they're asking for a reduction in their bill, which we've had in the past from other people. Um, People's Service did determine the culprit on the high usage. And, um, they're in the process of resolving that totally. So um, it was explained to them from the get-go that sewer would not be an option to reduce, and it never has been. So I just wanted to make sure that they were aware of that. And then, um, what the resident did, they took a look at their last four water usage of billing.
Hmm.
And, um, so then they were asking for that average dollar amount plus the full amount for the sewer, the full amount for the garbage recycle and debt service.
So I think that that's probably pretty fair to average it out. Do we, is it okay for me to, what was the problem that happened?
Yeah, it was a water softener that continuously ran.
Okay.
It didn't apparently shut off. So then they contacted the person that they were working with, that company.
Hmm, okay.
Walked them through it to shut it off. So it's shut off. But in the meantime, it was still streaming out water.
Gotcha. Get expensive real quick?
Yes, it did.
So is it the idea to cover just the half of the water, correct?
Well, it's a little bit half because when you average it out, it becomes a little bit half.
Right.
So it's underneath that.
And it sounds like they've been working with People's Service to address the issue right away. Yeah, I, I think we've all been in that position where this, you realize something's leaking and all of a sudden you're surprised. Typically, we've required them to come, but it sounds like they have a valid reason to not attend tonight.
Correct. And I said that I would, on their behalf, represent them.
So what's the, the dollar amount here then that we're talking about?
Of reducing?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Um.
Just curious.
Let me think about this. Okay, if we went half on the water, we, it's a difference of a hundred and sixty dollars.
That's nothing. And it's acting in good faith and hopefully they'll get a new water softener.
Or whatever, get it fixed, whatever.
Or whatever happened. I don't know. I didn't get into that part. So.
I'm, I'm fine with going with their average for the, for the billing cycle.
For that total? Is that what you mean?
Well, they took the average of their four water
Yep.
parts of the bill.
Yep.
Or they took four of them and averaged it. I'm okay with the water part because he still said they were gonna pay the full amount for all the other stuff.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. And the sewer is the biggest amount. So.
I'm fine with that.
And they understood that. They said we, you know, and that's what we've done in the past. We've never reduced it because we have to pay Arlington.
Hmm. It's always been a one-time kind of courtesy that we do in these weird situations.
Hmm.
So, but, so is that your motion to?
I'm, my motion is to be, to let them pay the half or whatever the average is there for this one-time incident that happened.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign and that carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a sidewalk update for everybody today. Just wanna let you all know that I did receive an email, which also coincides with, of course, a request for crosswalk action here on the highways. Um, we did notice MinDOT measuring areas on twenty five and five. What exactly they're doing, I'm not sure. Uh, but Minnesota State Representative Bobby Harder and I have been actively pursuing MinDOT to look at crosswalk options and to try to get one installed. Uh, in the meantime, we've all been trying to do that for the last four years, right? At the, at the school side and have planned it over here, here Parnell ideally, but we don't know. But we do have a plan in place, thank goodness, because of a grant we have. So we're able to share that with MinDOT. So we must be making some sort of, uh, moving and shaking at MinDOT because on October twenty second, um, our rep Mohammed Meyer just sent a random email after numerous times of connecting with him. He wanted to provide me with an update on progress. The Metro crew was in Green Isle last week specifically to conduct a detailed assessment of the Highway twenty five sidewalks. Next steps, the next phase will focus on the design process and developing a cost estimate for the replacement work. Timeline and funding, we recognize the urgency. I regret to inform you that the physical repair work cannot be completed this year due to the timing and weather. It is not feasible to complete the necessary construction before winter conditions make the work impractical and potentially compromise the quality of the new construction, which we think we all understand that. Our current goal is to secure the necessary funding and have the project ready for construction at the start of the next spring slash summer season. I will provide you with a more detailed update, including the preliminary cost estimate as soon as those figures are finalized by our design team. Please do not hesitate to contact me directly if you have any questions or require additional information. In the meantime, thank you for your patience. And that's from the MinDOT Metro South Area Support Engineer. And I'm going to also keep responding again regarding crosswalk activities out there as well. And the weird and unfortunate part is you have Metro South and then you have the Mankato District, depending on where you're at. But I think this is at least good news for the city because it's a significant savings. And thank goodness we postponed the bench work because now we will have a pretty huge sidewalk to work with. Hopefully by the spring and summer season, provided the budget goes well. But I will stay on top of them. That's the update I have for it. Then moving on to number nine, school update. Anybody?
I have nothing. I think you hit on it already with the email from attorney Jansen. He had asked if we'd heard anything. The E D A will discuss it at their next meeting, which is not until, um, next Monday. So we haven't had a E D A meeting since the last council meeting.
Perfect. Yeah, and I, you know, there's been, there's been a lot of talk around town and all these things, but, but to be clear, I don't think any of us are in favor of going to four quarter. Nobody wants to see that happen. What we want to see happen is the bank to accept our offer. Unfortunately, that, that has not happened. And, yeah, I look forward to E D A discussion here next Monday. And if nobody has anything else, we'll move on to number ten, E D A updates.
Like I said, we haven't met since the last council meeting, so I don't have any updates. But I do have one update for the council. I spoke with Sean Anderson today. Uh, Wide Open Marine, moving over here is what Marine's having. He is still trying to secure his financing. His lender was looking for support from the city council. I don't know that we've ever put anything in writing. I said, well, a resolution isn't really appropriate. We don't have anything to pass a resolution for. But we can certainly, um, say something to the effect that we support the development of Wide Open Marine and our industrial park. Sean also asked about, uh, that the city council approves any building permits. I said, well, you need to own the property first.
Correct.
Before you can go through any zoning permits or building permits. I said, once you own it and submit your site plan, it'll go to planning and zoning. But we can't make that promise to the lender until he closes on his loan and he starts building. So. Um, and that's, I guess, when I'm looking for some language like that to put it into the city council meeting minutes and that Sean can then get a copy out and provide to his lender.
Well, I think the, the building permit piece, I think we can see that it's highly likely, based on past conversations, that his building permits wouldn't be approved. However, they're all subject to planning and zoning review. And all that has been discussed in detail, we know what he wants, but that could change. So he still has to go through that, but I fully support him as a small business owner. And I think that he's going to be extremely good for the city of Green Isle, too. We have, he's already established his business over in Arlington for what, five years over?
Several years.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, most small businesses by this point were closed. So now it's, he's considered a successful business and now looking to expand. And so I strongly support the development of Wide Open Marine and Green Isle Industrial Park. Uh, yeah, I know on August fourth, twenty twenty five, E D A approved both the purchase agreement and a development agreement for the project. And upon completion of the land transfer, the owner will be eligible to apply for all the necessary zoning and building permits to proceed with the development. So I have, yeah, he has a hundred percent support from me. If we want to send something, does everybody else? I'll make a motion for Amy to send a letter in support from the City of Green Isle Council.
I have it go to the minutes, too.
And it will go on in the minutes. Yes. Yep. Uh, to send a letter out. That's my motion. Is there a second? Perfect. We have a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, we'll get those clear in the minutes. Did you need me to write a letter? Are we just gonna send pretty much this draft?
I understand that you.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that.
It should help.
Yeah. I'll get that over to you ASAP.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what he's looking for.
And then the minutes, of course, won't be official until the next meeting.
I did tell him that.
All right. So I'll get that to you no later than, uh, the end of the day on October twenty ninth.
Perfect. Thank you.
All of the favor?
Yep, we had the motion in a second. We did our discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign and that carries.
Those open discussions, Sean.
Thank you.
But you are helpful. All right. So that's our E D A planning and zoning update.
Uh, we have not met since last meeting either. We will meet on next Wednesday. We'll be reviewing updated zoning code. And then we will also be, at this time, we'll also be looking at, uh, the subdivision ordinance. I'm hoping that, um, it's approved. Those could possibly be approved at the next planning and zoning meeting. And then they would move on to attorney Jansen for review. And we'll have to hold a public hearing on both of them, get them approved.
Good. All right. And tree committee update.
We're still applying for the relief grant that deadline was extended to, it's November eleventh. Um, I have it about done. I'm just sitting on it and, you know, thinking about it a little bit. It should be submitted this week.
Perfect. We do see a resolution on the agenda, twenty twenty five dash three five. And this resolution is adopting the tree policy for right-of-way and easements. City of Green Isle recognizes the importance of managing tree planting and maintenance within city rights of way and easements to protect public infrastructure, safety, and utility operations. The tree policy for right-of-way and easements establishes clear guidelines for property owners, defines responsibilities, and affirms the city's authority regarding tree-related matters in public areas. The tree committee reviewed and approved the proposed tree policy for rights of way and easements on September second, twenty twenty five. No public hearing is required for adoption of this policy. Now therefore, it be resolved by the City of Green Isle or City Council of Green Isle, Minnesota as follows. Number one, the tree policy for right-of-way and easements is hereby adopted as the official policy of the City of Green Isle. Two, city staff is directed to maintain a copy of the tree policy at city hall and on the city's official website for public reference. And three, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. And that's what that's about. And I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash three five.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call vote?
Yes.
An I V S?
Yes, yes.
And that carries. So it's been adopted, Green Isle City Council on this twenty eighth day of October, twenty twenty five. That's signed for you. And we'll move on to park board updates.
Uh, before we move on, one more thing from tree committee. Uh, just wanna make sure that we, um, actually approved tree plotter renewal for the budget.
Oh, yes.
So I think it got brought up last time, but I don't think there was actually a motion to approve that budget. Um, so the tree committee voted to approve up to twenty five hundred dollars. And then Cal is working to, uh, see if he can negotiate a better price. Looks like he's already made some progress and it might be more like twenty one hundred. Um, but I think just to allow him to work with them, I would make, like to make a motion to approve tree plotter renewal not to exceed twenty five hundred dollars.
For a one-year subscription?
For a one-year subscription.
I will second that. And then for further discussion on that matter, that tree plotter has, for the Tree City USA, has all of the, the city data on it. As it sits, um, there's a lot more work to be done with it. And it'd actually be a waste of money for the city to cancel a subscription and lose all of the data that's entered in there right now. Um, so another year of this, especially in the spring and fall, we'll be able to gather that data, put it in layers, do with it what we want. Um, but extending it another year will keep us going strong. Anybody else have anything on that?
Yeah, I think once we kind of get our maps solidified, exporting a shape file, once we get some software to like be able to read stuff like that, um, we might not need the user interface that this app offers, but to get that information in there, this user interface is very helpful.
I enjoy it. It's pretty user-friendly, too. So, all right. There's nothing else. We have the motion in a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pose same sign and that carries. Anything else for tree committee? No. Moving on to park board updates.
A couple of updates this week. First one's kind of a park board and C P I C update. Um, park board met, uh, in May or June, and we discussed the trail plans in the comprehensive plan. And, um, the park board decided to review those and their priority and see if we, uh, wanted to adjust anything. Um, so we did feel that a couple tweaks should be made to the priority of those trails, crossings, and sidewalks. Um, so the park board presented that to C P I C last week or at the, at the last meeting, whenever it was, um, for, for their review. Um, other than that, we started to, or we're continuing to look at establishing park rules. Um, we got a little bit further into developing that ordinance at our last meeting. Still more work to do, though, but we're getting there. Uh, and then the last update I will share is on the flag contest. Um, we also started looking into what is that going to look like at our last meeting. So still more work to be done on that, but we are making progress on it now.
Thanks. I got a question for you. If this falls under the park board, the trails, have you guys got any more? Excuse me, updates about if the trails, like, where that one's gotta be fixed by our house? On like the estimates or anything like that?
No updates on that yet.
Okay.
Um, that is another thing we talked with C P I C about, though, is any trail work, sidewalk work that we do be nice to prioritize repairing what we currently have first.
Okay.
I think that's all I had.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Uh, fourteen street projects? There are many updates on that?
Nope, I, he hasn't. He's only called me once and that was just to question the meeting and what was said once and that was it.
Key meeting.
As in, uh, come on, Craig. Oh, okay. I couldn't think of it.
Um, yeah, I forgot what the, the company's called.
Final Properties.
Final Properties. Uh, so he was to have that completed by, well, we can't really pour concrete anymore. So we, I know we talked about that. So we're gonna have to reach out to him and request reimbursement before we go rebid since those linear feet were not completed.
Hmm.
Do we know how many linear feet are left for Diane?
I would say probably what he said he had to finish yet because I doubt it from our last meeting that anything got done. If it did, it was, wasn't much. I nothing on my side of town.
Right.
Sure. And I don't drive through that other area that often, but I would venture to guess probably nothing in there either.
It was over twenty linear feet, correct?
Oh, yeah, it was quite a bit.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll have to calculate that based on the linear foot and do we send an email at this point? Would you mind doing that when, when able?
I will, I will contact him.
That'd be great.
Start a discussion and then follow it up with an email. So we have a, a trail.
That'd be wonderful. Yeah. And, and again, if he has any questions, the council can answer. We invite him to come here.
Hmm.
Yes, he has to come to a meeting, not try to talk to anybody on the phone.
Correct. I think that's the best course of action. But, yeah, and then we'll, of course, be seeking out bidding next year for that. Completion of the project, should he choose to bid again, he's more than welcome to. Nothing else for street projects? Correct, Sean. We're all done there?
Correct.
All right. So.
Oh, wait, I got back. Street project, is there any, when is Brian gonna have that stuff done when they were done looking at the street? I just wanna, it kept in the loop. So then when I get that, I can, the couple of companies I can contact when I got that, then I could possibly start working on bids already from them.
The report that we did a resolution for, is that what you?
Yeah, the one where they're gonna look.
I have not seen anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
No. All right. Just let me know when that comes in or something like that. Okay. Now I'm done.
Um, for other, it is our anniversary of our website. They even sent us a card letting us know. So um, yeah, they wanted to just connect and focus goals for any sort of website improvements that we have in mind. So.
I thought of another update for other that I didn't mention.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
We were awarded the Small Town Grant in Southern Minnesota.
This is true. That's a good point.
Hmm, to have the Heritage Festival next October.
It was awarded.
October.
Yeah, we were awarded the, if you want to say the, the full name of it, what's the official name of our grant?
Small Town Grant.
Yeah, Small Town Grant to approve our Heritage Festival, which means a lot of planning is gonna be coming up.
Yes.
Um, and how did we want to do that? Formation of a committee of sorts, just a bad hawk committee?
Yeah, forming a committee. We'll announce it at the E D A meeting. The E D A doesn't know yet. So we'll announce that E D A meeting next week. And it would be nice to get a few members from the E D A to be part of that committee event. And it would be nice to get a few members from the E D A to be part of that committee and then. Yeah, we'll be recruiting for the winter and the planning.
That's, that's huge news, because, yeah, I, I remember years ago, we had the Oktoberfest out here and, in September, and it was. Pretty dang popular, so, to be able to do something like this is.
For the city to draw more people.
Very much so.
Amy, was that the Smith Grant?
Yep.
It's approved, so yes, thank you Amy for applying to that.
Was that the twenty thousand?
That one was ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Yeah. Yep, ten grand, that is a wonderful other item to add, so ten thousand dollars to plan a city party, I'm down with it. And then Sean, you had a other item.
Yes, I was over on our side there by the ponds, I was walking around looking at stuff for trees, if any trees have gone down or. Wanting, trying to figure out if I have to ask the D N R about if that pond needs to be cleaned up or not, and by doing that, beavers are back.
Correct, so I have something on that for you too.
I was just gonna give you the heads up, cause I just noticed that last week, when I rolled through a few times, the beavers are back and they're starting to take some trees down again along the ponds.
Yep, so I actually received a call and it was a person that's helped out before and it'd be no cost. But is during trapping season, which opens next week, he's willing to trap the beavers around that pond for, at no cost. So, I told him that this would be brought forth at the council, uh, eradicating those, the beaver in that area. Is a train wreck, and I know the last time we did this, they were gone for a long time. And as much as I love wildlife, they cause a lot of damage, which included even flooding homes, if I'm not mistaken, or causing some issues.
It got some issues with the ponds, yeah.
Yeah, it was bad, so. I'm all in favor of, of having those beavers trapped. And this individual is willing to do it, he's a local at no cost, so I see no issues with it. Have you guys heard anything else, otherwise I think we did this last time, but. I'm okay with making an exception to the rule for this to happen, before any further damage happens, cause especially if that the trail trees are gonna fall down on people.
And they do cut, they do chew on both sides, so that is right next to that trail, so.
Yes, it is. So, I'll make a motion to approve trapping of the beaver uh, behind the trail area and surrounding the pond. Um.
What do you do? On by us on Kill Kenny and also check the other ones too?
Yeah, well, we'll say Kill Kenny and then I'll, I'll call them about the other ones, but um.
Cause I know they like to travel, if not one, they might be in a different one.
So that's, that'd be the motion on Kill Kenny with a phone call to recommend the other, I'll give all of the information to Diane, so that she has it, should we receive any calls. However, I don't think anyone will even notice that there's trapping going on, just like last time, but it should go pretty quick. Uh, that's to occur Saturday, so.
Is it something we gotta post though, so for people that walk dogs?
Shouldn't interfere with their dogs.
Well, you never know what happens, that's why.
Right.
I catch my dog.
Dogs should be leashed.
Dog should be leashed.
It doesn't matter, sometimes the dogs will pull, if they're a small person, you know, Hunter's not that big, and if he's walking a Great Dane, that Great Dane's gonna pull him.
Yeah, and I'm, yeah, I'm not opposed to letting people know, like, like here, like. Yeah, we can, we can try to spread the word the best we can, um, but just like any animal owner. I wouldn't let my dog run in a pond where there's, especially during trapping season. But that's, that's just me, um, cause it's, doesn't look like it's pretty experienced, so.
Should we just close that trail for the weekend if we're worried about it?
And not that many people use it, I just wanted to put it out there though verbally, just.
Right.
I'll be careful over there.
Careful, Hunter, it's usually Hunter that's walking over there, I think that's about it.
No, there's other people there.
Alright, we can put cones up there as needed, um, yeah, we'll, we'll ask the person how far in the water it's going and things like that.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, we, that was my motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and that carries. I'm glad you bring that up, cause that's a, that's a big one, that is a big one. And then, sorry, lastly here, before we make that motion to adjourn, um, just a reminder to residents, we do have the Sibley East. Public School I S D twenty-three-ten referendum, that's coming up on November fourth, the polling place is not in Green Isle. And I, I noticed a few Facebook posts about that, so I just wanted to clarify, it's the school's choice. Where they want to combine polling places, not ours, so that's why we're not voting here. Um, the polling places that they chose to combine, and it's likely to save costs, cause they have to pay for this, this voting endeavor. Is Green Isle Township Hall. And so that's where we have to go, address would be four zero two one seven two hundredth Street Arlington. And zip five five three oh seven, so that will be our polling place, and. I did want to just give a rough guideline, I don't know if pre-election estimates were sent out to the public. But we did get one here at the city, so if your estimated market value for residential homestead apartments and commercial industrial property. Is estimated market value of fifty grand, you can expect your referendum taxes to be forty-five dollars added. If your home's usually on average about three hundred thousand, you can expect that to be two hundred and seventy-one dollars a year. So, it's something to think about, the referendum revenue would be six hundred and fifty dollars per pupil. And that's what they're looking at for their liberty to vote yes or no on it. But just getting the word out for November fourth, we are not the polling place. But you can request absentee, probably not anymore, I think it might be too late.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so, any questions, of course, call the government center in Sibley County. Anybody curious what, what theirs would be? With your home value, I know mine would be about a hundred and eighty bucks extra here, so. And that's just something for us to keep thinking about as we look at E D A stuff when it comes to this, this negotiations and budgeting and all of that, so. Without further ado, who wants to have the honors?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.